Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Schenectady City Council Committee Meeting for Monday, November 16, 2020, to order and then go into Finance. Mr. Palomini.
Call order to the Finance Committee. The first item on the agenda is the presentation of the DSIC or DSAD budget with Mr. Solango. We saw him under Attendees.
I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can't see me though, right? Okay.
No, I don't see you.
We can see you now. Go ahead. Okay. All right, so again, you received the document for our 2021 budget. And as usual, the city council approves the assessment portion of our budget. But of course, we'd like to show you our entire year's budget for, you know, for your awareness and you see how everything fits in together. This year, with everything that's been going on this year and with a lot of unknowns for next year, we've pretty much kept a pretty boring budget. You see page one between 21 and 20 is the same. We're proposing keeping our assessment flat for 21 as well as keeping our base participation being the same at 295. That's on page one. And then we'll split the assessment, divide it easily between our two factors for how we distribute that assessment among the property owners. And that's on page one. Page two just gives you a bit of an update on how we break down the expenses, both through the assessment and other funding sources. total spending plan for this year, or I'm sorry, income from this year is 88.703. And how we allocate that, you see on the right, is the majority of that, over 72%, goes towards our outdoor cleaning and maintenance program, which is EM. Our second largest program, which is business promotion and marketing, or BPM, is 24.21. And then just about 3.6% of that goes towards our admin costs. And on the lower left, just gives you an idea of some of the additional donated services that we get, sort of that provides additional resources throughout the year. And then page three is the total budget. Income on top, expenses on the bottom. And we show 2021 this year's budget against 2022. You see where the changes are. And as you can see, we've really taken a conservative approach to everything for 2021 because there are a lot of unknowns, as there were this year. So we've reduced our anticipated income by about 79,000, but we've also reduced our expenses by about 78,000. And that ultimately gives us a bottom line of pretty close to where we were this year of about minus $15,000 that we will appropriate a small amount from our general fund balance. But again, you know, should other funding sources come in and we're able to pick up on a few things that we would like to do, but we're, again, being conservative upon, we will certainly consider that throughout the year. And then the last two pages, it's the same information, except that it's broken down by how the expenses are allocated between the two main program areas of business promotion and environmental. Yes. So that's it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Solango?
Mr. Palomini?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank Mr. Solango and his team. They've done a fantastic job in keeping the streets clean, understanding that, you know, we are in the middle of a pandemic, but I've been in and around downtown and things are definitely up to snuff, you know, just beautiful down there with the baskets over the summer. And I am assuming, and maybe Mr. Solango can clarify this, are we going to be decorating at all for the holidays?
Oh, yes. The tree is already up in the stages of being decorated and our outside team started making the rounds today with all the wreaths and other holiday decorations. What we're actually looking at doing is, since we won't have a parade this year for the official lighting of the tree, but we're looking at doing a standalone, independent event that we can stream online for the community to see the tree lighting next week.
Good idea. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, very well. Thank you, Mr. Solango.
Thanks so much.
Just as a reminder, the public hearing for both the DSAD and the Upper Union Street bid is next week, next Monday. So those will both be held then. Next on the agenda is the call for a public hearing with the CARES Act HUD's funding with Derek Gugamuck.
Good evening. So we just received, and we created a allocation, I don't know if you could see the budget as well. We received $619,061 from HUD. This is the CDBG CB3 funds. So we'd like to call a public comment period and we request that residents within the community respond with comments for this proposed allocations. The public comment period begins Tuesday, November 17th, which is that tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. and will conclude on Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. So we're recommending, requesting a call for a public hearing on the CARES Act HUD funding CDBG CB3 to be held in conjunction with normally scheduled city council meeting on November 23rd, 2020.
Are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion? I'll move it. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is to authorize the contract between the cities Schenectady and the Hamilton Hill Art Center, again with Mr. Gugamuck.
Thank you. The city will contract with the Hamilton Hill Art Center to fund the facility improvements in order to meet COVID-19 safety protocols. We are planning to reallocate 70,000 of the 322,000 CDBG CB1 housing neighborhood stabilization funds to provide those improvements to the facility, just to expedite that process. That's why we want to reallocate 70,000 of the 322,000. Historically, HHAC has served over 200 children annually located with low-income areas. We recommend the city to enter into contract with Hamilton Hill Art Center with funding source CDBG CB1.
Are there any questions?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I think I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Call to order, public safety, and the first item is the financial year 2020 state homeland security grant program. Assistant Chief Mike Saber.
Yes, good evening, everyone. It's essential paperwork on this. Basically, it's a yearly grant we receive from Homeland Security. It's regarding, obviously, our infrastructure interoperability throughout the state, be able to communicate and so forth, protect our asset areas. The budget that we have for the city Schenectady portion is allocated through to Albany Rensler, Schenecty Counties, and cities of Troy, Schenecty, and Albany. And we get together a few times a year and talk about strategies and so forth. And we use the formula based upon census numbers that we have to divide the money up. We feel that's the fairest way we can divide it. And with that said, the city's amount was $171,875 this year. And we have, or we are recommending that we buy the following items with that. Right now, we have our public camera system that we have a mobile unit that we deploy out in just general areas. It can be from large gatherings to high crime areas and so forth. These funds, some of these funds will be used towards buying two to three more mobile units that we could deploy throughout the city, for different reasons, sometimes just all in public safety. We have a video camera wall that we call the wall here at the department that we monitor almost hours of every day that we've had installed, about six or seven years old, but it's on 24/7, starting to go, some of the parts of the monitors are starting to go, and replace that video wall. And last is to buy either one or a couple drone systems that we can deploy depending on needs. If I can answer any follow-up questions on that, but those are pretty much the three items that we're looking to purchase.
So Saber, in terms of timeline, what are you looking at?
We have three years to spend the money. Once we, I believe it starts this past September, October. It's already kind of started in the fiscal world, but we have up to three years to spend it. Usually, just by time it gets all approved and everything else, you're four to five months into the three-year span. So basically, we'd have until I believe it's August or September of 2023.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Moudavair, I have a question.
Just ahead, Saber.
Thank you. Chief Saber, so do you, I see the amount, do you have any budget really attached to that, or it's just you haven't really drilled down to an actual budget?
Yes, I apologize for that. I meant to include it in my paperwork. We have just over $71,000 for the three mobile units I spoke of that we could deploy. Again, we say two to three because depending on the cost, the one that we thought was, I think originally, goes to $35,000, $40,000, but the cost has come down over time and we feel we can get at least, to be honest, we'd at least three of those. The camera wall, we have $50,000 slated for. Those of you that have been here at the police department, it's pretty elaborate, if you would, very large, so we can put multiple cameras. Remember, we have all three or 400 cameras out there in the field. We can actually put them up on the walls at various blocks, if you would. And then $50,000 to begin a drone program.
All right. And my further question is, I know this is going to be spent over a three-year period. And going through, considering what the discussions we're talking about right now, reform and reimagining police, is there any, would there be opportunity over these three years to be able to reallocate these funds if there was, if possible, to doing more like community-based things or putting money towards more, I'll call it community policing, and I'm not sure exactly what that would look like, but in terms of that, because this seems mostly technology. So would there be an opportunity to reallocate funds over the three years? Is the outcome of the police reform and re-imagination led in that direction?
No, I understand. It's probably yes-no answer. At least you have to stay within the guidelines of the grant, and this grant is for, again, interoperability, which we spent a lot of money in past years on for communications. And we are going with the county right now for a 17 or 18 million dollar project that they got funded through Homeland Security. So the other thing is to protect our infrastructures within the city, and we have to identify those infrastructures and so forth, without getting too detailed into it. But yet, there are some guidelines in there that I'd have to look further into, so I guess I don't have a steadfast answer for you. But we can reexamine it, and obviously, we are kind of on hold on a lot of the projects pending the outcome of these discussions.
May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The next item is Discussion, Safety, and signage in Central Park, Ms. Perezal.
Yes, this is ongoing from the meeting two weeks ago, and maybe with ACC-Ber on the line, he might help us a little bit in. And maybe with ACC Seaver on the line, he might help us a little bit in this vein. But the concern was, and we had a community member, a resident of that area, call in two weeks ago as well, is the behavior that's going on in the basketball court, the gunshots, not once, but a couple of times now, the lack of signage saying that the park closes at dusk to help us reinforce getting people out of there at, you know, after dark, non-smoking, no smoking signs, things of that nature that we had touched on. There may be additional patrols in place, I don't know. But it's just so concerning. We have our, you know, families in the park, and the basketball courts are in a, you know, they skirt a residential area. And I think, you know, everyone in the council, you know, reflected a real concern with the safety of the park currently.
Maybe I could lead off on it. It's really two sides, at least. One is the signage, which we have moved slower than I would have liked to this year. And the goal has really been to standardize the signage, not only in Central Park, but throughout other parks in the city, where before it had been kind of a mixed overall messaging that was a little sloppy and disjointed. So we were looking to have things that were standardized colors, standardized wording, also in Central Park because of the investments we've made in the A-Diamond Music Haven, Rose Garden, other places to have better directional signage. So that, again, unfortunately, has not moved as fast as it's like, even though it's still being discussed and worked on. The other component of the safety issue, you know, some of the incidents Chief Seaver made, better information, they really originated, one of the shootings, I think, originated outside of the park and ended up spilling into the park. Won't get into any further details on that because it's still under investigation. And it's some of the uptick that we've seen in gun violence since this spring. It's, we really had a fairly impressive record until COVID came into place. And some of the things that the chief is outlining, those cameras allow us, we've got the network in place, which is very effective. These cameras allow that to be leveraged to a greater degree and greater flexibility, and also create a more visible level of deterrence. And so, you know, it's things that want to work on. If you have any ideas, comments, or suggestions, want to take it into consideration, and really looking to probably by next spring be able to put a more comprehensive signage package in place, in-market the activities that are going on in the park. And then hopefully, the uptick that we've seen in violence will have come back down, and people will be using common sense again and not some of the lunacy that we've seen out on the streets. I don't know if Chief Seaver has any additional comments or thoughts on it.
Oh, I usually 100% agree with the mayor. No, the mayor's absolutely correct.
I thought you left it by you alone, sorry.
No, the mayor's absolutely right. You know, some of the items that we want to buy today, we can, you know, kind of station up there at different times. The signage, and again, in my opinion, especially legally, helps us because if we are to make arrests up there after hours, it's very important that we can show it as well-posted, and people understand and know the rules. So, yes, along with the mayor saying, anything we can do uniformly throughout the city to make it all signs, all parks the same, obviously, we endorse because this makes it easier from a law enforcement standpoint to say, these are the rules, and they're simplified for every park. So if you have more questions, I can kick in to any investigations and such. But we are, obviously, we're stepping up patrols. We want to make this park the safest it can be and safest park in the country, but we're, you know, working on that as well.
Question from Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible for us to deploy the mobile camera there, since it's supposed to continue to be used and to kind of deter any, you know, illegal activities? And at the same time, increase the patrol?
It can be, even though the criteria that's used for the camera tends to be based on events that are happening. So where I could say, yes, it's going to go into Central Park, I'm not necessarily going to guarantee it at any given time because there may be an assessment, a risk evaluation, that would justify its deployment someplace else.
Yeah, just that. We do have the camera deployed right now. We deploy the camera quite a bit. Again, it's not just for events that happen around the city, but right now it is being utilized. But it doesn't mean, you know, obviously, I'll bring this back to the chief tomorrow, and the assistant chiefs will discuss it and try to deploy it as, in the areas, the hot areas, if you would.
Yeah, we'd appreciate it because that's what one of the residents was asking also in terms of like weekends. Fridays and into weekends are the most time, the peak time. And they're asking if some patrols can increase around that time. And at the same time, the cameras available, it would be a great idea to deploy it there.
Yeah, so would you? Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleague, Ms. Porrazo?
Yes. I suppose it's fortunate that we're going into winter because we seem to have less activity, obviously, because people aren't outside as much. But is there any way, I mean, you know, ACC Seaver said it himself, that it's much easier to make arrests when there's something that they can point to and say, "Look, it says right there, you can't be here after dark." But I mean, is there some temporary signage we could get up until we get this package together? We do have a sign, a sign, you know, making capability. Can we at least get something temporary?
I'm more than willing to look at that. Do you have a specific spot or point that has been brought to your attention that's causing more of a problem than just the area in general or parks in general?
Well, no, I'm specifically talking about the activities that have gone on in Central Park, and there's just not good signage. So if we could make that at least a priority, where there have been, you know, specific and really serious trouble to get signage up there so that we can get people out of the park after dark or whatever as needed. I mean, you know, that would be up to the police to tell you where it would be most helpful for them. But it seems like, you know, I mean, we've had some really serious activity going on in the park, and it's a concern to, you know, the residents of the city and not just me. I mean, it's scary, to be honest with you. You think about families in the park and kids in the park.
And I agree with that, and some of the activities and some of the individuals that are involved in that, I do not believe that signage is going to create the level of deterrence that we want, that they're acting in a manner that is just inappropriate across the board. And the police department works in a methodical way to put the cases together, and the best deterrence is for them to be arrested.
Mr. Mootivaren?
Go ahead, please.
So I just like to also say that, Mayor, you asked if there was a specific place. And I would like to recommend the basketball court because that's a place, first of all, that people have large gatherings. And in addition to the signs about closing, I know that your office was, received a couple emails, as I understand it, that there's large gatherings. So if we also put up signs that say that gatherings have to be a specific number, whether it's 50, but there's been gatherings over 200, and I know it's getting cold, and maybe people aren't going to do that anymore. But still, if we have signs that say that, not only because it just, you know, the more people, the more interaction, but also because of the uptick that we're seeing in COVID right now. I think that this may be an opportune time to be able to put up those signs that say, "Only this many people can be here, and even if you're here at this time, you really have to leave." Because if I, if I think about the park, because I do spend more time there than I have in years past, simply because, you know, you can't go many other places. And that's where I see most people gathered, are around the basketball courts. And or sometimes at baseball, but more often than not around basketball because they just, you know, it's just a place people like to gather, watch people play, et cetera. So if you are asking for a specific place where we could start, I would recommend that as a specific place where we could start for signage right now.
Mr. Mootivaren?
Go ahead, please, Ms. Porter.
So one of the things that I think could help deter a lot of this would be some increased lighting in the park. And I don't know if that's on the table yet, Mr. Mayor, or if, you know, there's any possibility that we could get some increased lighting. I would, I would think that would help to deter a lot of it. You know, the crowded area where they're hiding in the shadows and whatnot. And with it getting dark so much earlier, it would be extremely beneficial if we could get some additional lighting in the park.
Yes, we can look at that, and I apologize, I don't know where National Grid is as part of the rev demonstration in replacing the lights with LED fixtures so that we have the ability to dim or brighten them. And they generally create a greater level of brightness in an area than what the older fixtures were so that, it's one of the things that we had been looking at, but more than willing to look at it in conjunction with the signage and policing.
Thank you, that would be great.
Any other questions from my colleagues or comments? Ms. Porrazo, do you want to, you are comfortable with it? Or do you want to put this back on the agenda for a follow-up?
No, I don't, well, I don't think it needs to go back on the agenda at this juncture, unless someone else does.
And Lisa, I think there was some draft signage done before. I don't know if you've been made aware of that or not, some of the weight finding. So I'll see if we can get you that tomorrow or the next day so you look at it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next item is a review of the guideline by laws for the civilian police review board with the repeal of 50, Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mootivaren. So as everyone knows, you know, we've been having the meetings about the police reform. I didn't see, I attended all of the meetings except the one. Unfortunately, it's on public safety, it was in the middle of the day. But throughout that, I didn't see any particular meeting that really focused on the CPRV. And as I said before, those guidelines, that guidance comes from legislation that was moved forward by the city. It's part of our code. So what I, as a council, I think we really need to begin to take a look at our code as it currently is, and if it's really meeting the guidelines, if it's meeting the need of our citizens. Because really, civilian review board is defined as an agency that is staffed by civilians and not sworn officers in charge with investigating civilian complaints against law enforcement. And there's various levels. I've been doing a little bit of research on this, and so there's various levels. So at this point in time, I think we need to look at the five levels, actually, that I was able to find and find out where our particular civilian police review board is at this moment. And that's also like meeting the needs and meeting the intent of our city code. And to also look at the legislation and make sure, again, that we're following the legislation. As I've said in the past, we, it says that we should have an advisory board, and to my knowledge, that does not exist. So I really think that we, as a, as a council, should be looking at that legislation. And I realize that the review board is going to come forward with their recommendations, but it's ultimately our responsibility to put together legislation. And so I think that's what we really need to take a look at now. And what I would like to do is to be able to send this information out to my colleagues, and let's take a look at it and then, you know, and have those discussions. That's what I have right now, Mr. Mootivaren.
Okay, would you like, would you like us to have this back on the agenda? Or are you going to move forward with providing us material?
I would do that, but I just wonder, I know that some council members said that they've had, you know, an opportunity to take a look, so I'd be interested to hear if there's any feedback from any of my colleagues.
Mr. Mootivaren?
Go ahead, please.
I have not taken a deep dive into the information yet, but I agree with Ms. Porterfield that it is something we should be paying attention to and discussing. And not only maybe changing the code, but then checking in that it's being handled the way it should be handled, if it's part of the city code, just like anything else, right?
So Ms. Porterfield, so what is, if I may ask, the intention of the move forward?
Right, so at this point in time, I've asked Chief Clifford to forward what the, how the procedures are and how they're actually handling things. And so as we, so my strong suggestion is that we compare how it's handled against the legislation that we put forward, what says in our city code, and see if we're meeting, if it's moving in that direction. And in addition to that, again, to look at, and I can, you know, provide some of the same background information that I've looked at from other municipalities and other organizations, law enforcement organizations, that are doing to see that if, you know, we, basically, a chat listener, is this how it's working for us? Do we need to change anything? I think we have until April 1st to get all of our police reforming guidelines or recommendations in. And since the civilian police review board is part of our law enforcement, I think that's something that we need to make sure that that particular part is done. So again, I will move, I'll send the information out to all my colleagues. We take a look, and then we discuss it. We could wait, we could wait, you know, for two more cycles. It doesn't have to be in two weeks. You people are beginning to go towards the holidays. So clearly understood. But again, I think in December, we should be coming, revisiting this and having some discussion around it.
Okay, thank you for that update. The next item is update police reform task force. This is an item that we've been putting on the agenda for several weeks, just to get an update on the police reform task force. Mayor McCarthy or your staff, would you mind giving us an update on what is going on at this point in time and the path forward on all the meetings?
I think everybody is aware of the meetings we've had, the outreach, the meetings. The information now is coming together, and we're still open if people want to send in comments or statements. And that is all being forwarded to the FINN Institute, who signed on to our research partner, is our research partner. So they're going to now try and reduce that down into actionable items or do some weighting of the significance of the comments and suggestions that would then come back as part of the, what'll be our final package that we're going to, you know, my, working with the chief and the team we have in place, putting it together and then submitting it to the council and the police community review board. And that role within the overall structure of the police department or law enforcement within the city would be part of that. So some of the things that Councilmember Porterfield is raising, again, you always want to look at it. I would encourage the council maybe to give it a little bit of time so that it complements the other activities that are happening simultaneously. But clearly, by the end of the year, getting into the 1st of January, that that'll all be packaged and ready to go forward.
Mr. Mootivaren, I have a question for the mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Mayor, I noticed that a couple of our closer municipalities, Albany and Troy, actually had an audit done of, I'm going to believe, is their police manual. And I know that, as I understand it, that's not something that we've done. Is that going to be a part of what we'll be doing ultimately as we put together our police reform package?
We have not talked about a formal audit, but a review is clearly part of what we're going to do.
So you mean the review by the, by, review by whom? Let me ask that question, let me not.
We have the Finn Institute, we have community leaders, people are looking at it, if you have something that you want specifically reviewed, you know, you have to bring it forward, and that we would do that. We have done a lot of the things simultaneously, I don't know if the chief released it today or if it's going out tomorrow. One of the big opponents in all police departments are the use of force. Schenectady actually started almost two years ago, putting together a use of force report. All our records had been maintained in old paper copies, so they had to be collated, digitized, and there were some things that were blank, or because they were handwritten, weren't easily interpreted, they had to go back, reviewed, corrected, and that is now in a format that, again, will be released. The chief is talking about doing it today, I'm not sure that it went out, so probably go out tomorrow, which would be available to the council, and it's that type of thing that would be part of an audit. I wouldn't pay an outside firm now to come in and do that, where we've already done it in a manner, I think the council will find it very impressive and useful as part of the discussion. So we have a lot of these records internally that are what I believe in better shape than some of our sister cities, which allow us to do that analytic review that some people would classify as an audit.
All right, okay, so just one other last question. So the, when, the information, as I understand what you're saying, is that the Finn Institute will pull together what they're getting from the, the various meetings that took place, and will then put in a format that, that will be forwarded to the council for us to consider. Will we be seeing everything, or will we just be seeing it, that's like a summary type, like what, what, what came up most often, or will we be seeing everything? How will that, or?
What exact format it would be in, but you're going to be given whatever you would like. If you want all the raw or empirical data, you most certainly can have that.
Thank you.
And just also comment, the other advantage of working with the Finn Institute is they have worked with Schenectady before, so they have information, they've done surveys, they're going to do another survey as part of this process here, but they have some baseline information that can show where, hopefully we're making improvements or areas that we need to improve on, that other communities may not have that, may have to go back and recreate it, or do some internal analysis to put that in place. We're, we're fortunate to have had that relationship with the Finn Institute and the work they've done in the past.
Any other comments from my colleague? Mayor, thank you, thank you for the updates. Any other business for public safety?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'd like to call to order government operations, we have three items on the agenda. The first item for this, is up for discussion is backyard chickens, Ms. Patrick and Mr. Motivaren?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Just an update on this, with this item, we had it several weeks on the agenda. We have over the, the last week or so been getting a lot of emails in support, some, you know, phone calls and emails against it. I had a conversation with the president of the Schenectady United Neighborhood Association, Mr. Tom Carey, and I asked him to, if he can discuss it at their meeting tomorrow, and to come back with me with a discussion of what the neighborhood, the entire group think about backyard chicken. So Ms. Porterfield, I will ask that we, we hold this on until I get more information from the sun, and we can able to move forward, because I would like to get their input in this item, because eventually it will be something that, throughout the neighborhood, and the neighborhood association should be part of it, and to help us to move forward is if it's pro or con, and we can able to assess it at the council, and help us to move forward.
Yes, Ms. Patrick? Did you have anything to add?
I, I don't, I don't have anything to add, I think that waiting for, to hear from the associations, because I agree with Mr. Motivaren, we've heard from both sides, and I think it's important to see what the neighborhood associations have to say. We've heard from some of our neighborhood associations, but not as a cohesive, the sun group, so I agree with what he said.
Yeah, and they have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, and this is on the agenda for this session, so we'll wait and get some feedback from them, and how we've been able to better address this.
All right, so we'll be holding this for two weeks to hear from them, and also, let me just encourage any other residents who are listening or interested in this to please send their comments forward, whether it be in support of or whether it be against, we've, as has been said, we have heard the both, and whatever decision we make, we want to make sure that this is the decision that serves our entire community the best way possible, so thank you for those of you who have sent your comments in and reached out to us, we ask people to continue to do that, because we have to move forward in this legislation at some point, so we don't want to really keep kicking the can down the road, but we do want to make sure that we get as much input as possible on this particular piece of legislation, simply because it can impact every person who lives in this city. So thank you for that, and we will hold it for two weeks.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, Ms. Parazzo?
Can I suggest that we also ask sun to discuss two other options? One would be the co-op option that we discussed, because I thought that was a really viable option, if we had some areas, just like community gardens, where people could have, keep chickens or, you know, rent space, or whatever the case may be, so ask them to please discuss that, because I think that's an important discussion to have.
Absolutely.
Feedback on, and also the discussion of a pilot program that would sunset, so that we could look at the program and say, okay, it wasn't a problem if we work within these parameters, you know, we had 10 families throughout different neighborhoods that did this, and they stayed within the parameters, and it was doable and all that, so, so not just should we have backyard chickens, or shouldn't we have backyard chickens, but also some different ways to approach it, to see whether it would be successful or not successful.
Absolutely, that's great feedback, and Mr. Motivaren, since you were speaking with the Chair of Sun, could you make sure that that information gets relayed?
I will, I will pass it on this evening, or early tomorrow, to discuss on these options.
Okay, all right, and, and that'd be great, I appreciate that, and if you could just include me in, in on that, so we can, I could just kind of keep track of what's going on with this discussion as we continue the discussion.
No problem.
All right, so thank you for, thank you everyone for your input on that. The next item on the agenda is to discuss hiring outside contractors to do OGS work instead of using staff, Ms. Parazzo?
Yes, I'm glad the mayor's on the call tonight, I see that Mr. Lafond once again is not, but I got several calls from a variety of city employees that reported contractors being used when city employees were available to do that work, and that is of concern to me. One is that we are farming out small engine repair when we have someone qualified to do that job, another is that we're farming out some vehicle repair to local car dealerships and local garages. The third is that we could have used some of our employees to do some of the tree removal after the storm. I understand it was catastrophic, and in that case, we want to be as efficient as possible, get people back online with power and all of that, but it's also my understanding that we had employees that were qualified and available to do that work, but the lion share of it was, was farmed out to a contractor. And lastly, I have some concerns, and the reason why I want to discuss this in public is it's budget related, and I don't, you know, I was, I was told I should call the mayor's office or whatever, but I think this is important for the public to know, because this is all budget related. And lastly, the concern of the grievances, we, we have grievances and arbitration, and it drags on forever and ever, and then you end up winning, and what my understanding is, and these are all based on management requests for people who work outside their job, for, you know, a variety of things, that when the city loses, we're not only responsible for our legal costs, but we have to pay the union side a legal cost too. So I, I just, you know, this is an ongoing issue where we hear story after story after story after story about the management, and some of the choices in OGS, and I just, I just want to know what the heck is going on, and why we can't get this running smoothly.
So where would you like me to start, with small engine repair?
Sure, wherever you'd like to start.
I allocate the work based on the most efficient utilization of public dollars. Some of the employees are creative in their interpretation of their contract or their job description, and they end up being what I would classify as underperformers. I can get the work done cheaper, better, and faster by farming it out. I'm one that promotes work within public employees, we've had several things there where, you know, you're choosing a format that is, I think, somewhat one-sided in terms of articulating what's being relayed to you when you haven't chosen to talk to me or talk to Paul Lafond on the background issues that are out there, and again, those points that we have put forth, the unions, job descriptions that have been changed, and they take positions that are, again, I don't believe in their best interest over the long time, nor that of the city. You know, with the storm, we used a lot of city employees to do it, spent probably $90,000 in outside work, we, you know, we're very lucky, people performed at a fairly high level, you look what the fire department did, police department did, Bureau of Service, our wastewater treatment plant ran for roughly 26 hours on auxiliary power, we were one breaker, something trips from a major environmental catastrophe in that. You know, National Grid mobilized a lot of people in the morning after the storm, I think we still had just under 8,000 people that did not have power within the city. And so I can go through and defend, articulate the reasons why we chose things, you know, we have our tree truck, you know, it boils down to the number of chainsaws that you have in this type of event. That truck has a chainsaw assigned to it, it's locked in it, that chainsaw has disappeared, would indicate to me that's an internal theft, so it would point to those employees that are working there, had access to it, and there are those type of things in terms of management that have to make decisions, and I'm going to do them that are in the best interest of the city. I'm not afraid to make tough decisions, and I'm not afraid to make decisions that people may complain about, or that they feel that they're somehow inconvenienced, been very fair to the employees, they have good benefit packages here, and I want them to excel and be real leaders.
Well, all I can say, Mayor, is if it were one person calling me, I, I, I would not have concern, but it is, over the, over the course of the last couple of years, it's got to be upward of 20 different employees calling from different departments that are distraught, distraught at how the city is being run. Now, listen to me very carefully, I'm not saying that we don't have success in running the city in some departments, and that our fire and police don't work hard, and that our OGS people don't work hard. All I'm saying is there is a treasure trove of issues, and the arbitration is showing that the wrong decisions are being made, because, and again, now we're on the line because of a management decision for not only paying our legal costs, but the union's legal costs, not to mention that it's dragged on and on and on, and there's a boatload of grievances and everything else, so I, I, I know, as a councilperson, I have no jurisdiction over this, other than to squawk about it and run my mouth, but I'm asking you, Mayor, please to take a deep dive into this, because something is not right here. The amount of disgruntled employees that I hear from indicates something isn't right. So that's, that's my final, it's, it's so frustrating about this, it's my final request of you, is please look into it as the city's top manager, how that department is being managed.
Okay, are there any comments from, thank you, Ms. Parazzo, thank you, Mayor, any, so Mayor, did you have any, anything further you want to add to that?
Ms. Porterfield?
Ms. Zulski-Walzunas, is that you?
Yes, thank you. I, I just want to know how many, how many people have gone and complained to HR or followed the appropriate procedures in reference to Ms. Parazzo's, you know, concerns? Do we have any idea of, of how many people have gone through the process to, through HR?
I can tell you, we have a significant amount of grievances that have been filed, but the city lets them drag on and on and on and on and on, and then we finally, eventually go to arbitration.
That's a completely incorrect characterization of it, you referenced one arbitration that we lost recently, you know, everything is followed up in a timely manner.
So Ms. Zulski-Walzunas, I guess, to answer your question, we have to go to HR and just get, I mean, how far back are you, are you asking about this? Are we talking about six months, are we talking about a year? How, how far back did you want to, to get that information?
I, I'd go to over the last year.
I beg your pardon?
Over the last year, if that's possible.
Okay, so Mayor, is that possible for us to get the information over the past year, the number of grievances filed, and the outcomes, obviously without the names, et cetera, and the, but, from which department it comes from?
Why wouldn't we put the names on it?
Well, then put the names on it, that's fine.
Councilmember, you want to send in a request for a specific time period, that we'll have that followed up on?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, but, excuse me, one minute, Ms. Azulski-Walzunas, can you, and when you send your request, can you include the entire council, so we all know? I appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Parazzo?
I would recommend that Ms. Zulski-Walzunas also reaches out to the union representatives.
And the law department, obviously, has information, if, I'm sorry for interrupting, Ms. Porterfield, I just wanted to just make sure that information is shared, if I may.
Did you want to share information at this moment, is that what you're saying?
No, I just want to make, I do have some information, we did have a grievance recently that we had an arbitra, we did a hearing on it, but it had to do, and it came out of OGS, it had to do with a shift change, it didn't have to do with anything related to... It didn't have to do with anything related to work that people actually had, it had to do with a shift change. There's that, that's the most recent grievance that we dealt with. In terms of any other outstanding grievances, there's nothing that we've, you know, for lack of a better word, slow rolled. You know, everything has to, you know, essentially when somebody files a grievance, we have a time interval in which we have to respond to the grievance. Either it has to be, you know, we approve the grievance, whatever the grievance is, we admit that, you know, whatever they brought to the table is correct and we're wrong. Or we deny the grievance. And there's, there's a process and we have so many days to respond to a grievance. So it has to go through that process and we can't drag it out, for lack of a better term. Once that, let's say we deny the grievance. It's initially denied and then let's say they appeal it to the mayor and let's say the mayor denies it again. The ball's now in the court of the union to make the determination on how they want to proceed. Is this something that they want to have a hearing on? And it's, it's on them. And then, you know, they have to file with, with purr saying that, you know, we have a grievance, it was unresolved. And then it's really put on the perp, on, on perp's plate to schedule a hearing with an arbitrator. So I, I would, from my experience in my office, I can't speak to what happened prior to me being, you know, in that position. There haven't been any grievances that have come through and there is nothing that we've slow rolled or anything like that. I will provide additional information by looking back for the time period that's being requested.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Colden. So what I'm hearing is that we're going to be asking for grievances over the past year. And so that would just, we won't limit it to working outside their job, et cetera, any grievance that was filed by any individual, by any department. I know that we're talking about OGS. Do you want to limit it to OGS, Ms. Perazzo?
The only due is feedback I get on a regular basis is from OGS.
Okay.
And that's what I was talking about, the arbitration, when I was saying there were management decisions that are being made that are costing the city money. Not just about doing work outside their job structure, but ma, management decisions that are being made where the union is saying, this is incorrect, you can't do this. And we're saying, oh, well, I'm going to do it anyway and you're going to like it. And then we end up, you know, losing arbitration because it shouldn't have been done in the first place. So those, and this, this is now number two, I believe. This one was just recent, but this is the second situation where we lost in arbitration.
Okay, so then our, again, our request would be to find out the grievances that were filed, filed from OGS, when they were filed, when they were responded to and what the, what the grievance was for. And to ask for this information over the past year. Ms. Zulsky-Walzunas, does that cover what you're trying to, the information that you are asking in terms of the grievances?
Yeah, what's happened since the first of last year. And I'll, I'll include Mr. Colden on this so that if, he can respond also as need be.
All right. Well, Ms. Perazzo, was there anything else that you wanted to bring forward on this topic?
Nope, not this time.
Ms. Porterfield?
Uh, Mr. Palamani?
Yeah, I also think there needs to be outcomes if there has gotten to that point. Because quite frankly, anybody could file a grievance. It doesn't necessarily mean it's valid. So the concern should be valid grievances. And so we would need the outcomes.
Well, okay, I understand. But I'm not sure we can use the term valid because somebody files a, files a grievance and their opinion it's valid. So, so what you're saying is you want what the outcome would be? Whether, whether we agreed with it or denied it? You want it to be part of it?
Yeah, what the result was if it, if it got to that point yet.
Okay, so the results as well.
Yep, I have that solution.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else on this topic, we'll move on to the final agenda item under Government Operations, Appointments to the Downtown to Connect the Improvement Corporation, DSIC Board. Mr. Mayor?
I've submitted a list of names to you. You know, we've, years ago shifted that the DSIC does an internal recruitment and solicitation process. I've basically taken those names and forwarded to you for your consideration and hopefully affirmative action.
All right, so for my colleagues, do you all have the list? Have you had the opportunity to review that?
I have.
Yep.
Support the slate of officers that have gone forward and board members.
Uh, is that Ms. Zulsky-Walzunas?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any, anything? So if you need, I can, I can read them for you. If not, hopefully you all had a chance to. To, we only have, let's see, we do have, for terms ending in May 21, we do have a new appointment, Camerani. I'm only going to give you the new appointments for the terms ending in May 31st, 2022. The new appointment would be Anis Wahid, who's a property owner. And the others are, oh, I'm sorry, in terms ending in 2023, Michael Burns would be a new appointment to fill a vacancy. Just to be clear, those are all to fill vacancies, not replacing anyone. So if there's no other questions, I entertain a motion to accept the Mayor's appointment. Any second? Who, who was that moved that, was that Ms. Perazzo?
It's me, just like that. I would definitely second it. Uh, sorry about that. I was, I was thinking, uh, these are my, my recommendations. I support all of them and I'll second Ms. Perazzo.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before Government Operations? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Health and Recreation Committee to order. And we only have one item on the agenda, which is the continuing discussion about the Rose Garden permit fees for photography. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Palamani, although I see that Mr. O'Brien has also. So, Mr. Palamani, would you like to take it away?
Yeah, this is the, I think, the third time we're bringing this forward. There were a number of questions that were asked before, asked again. And the Rose Garden Committee responded with an email that you see on the screen now. They, we also have on the line former council member Sean O'Brien, who is part of the Rose Garden Committee. And we're hoping that we can move this out of committee tonight with their recommendations. So, Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Oh, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for having, having me tonight. The president of the committee, Matt Quavis, can't make it here tonight. So if you have any questions, but we appreciate the, the committee and the council's look, you know, outlook on this. And, and if you have any questions, follow up questions based on our previous meetings with you, I'm here to answer them. But I think the email that you have before you on the screen from Matt Quavis, I believe, answers those questions that were brought up in previous committee meetings regarding this. And, you know, just as an overview, I mean, this is, we're looking for a fee in, you know, $75 to $100, really closer to the $75 fee. The, the idea is, is to make it reasonable and approachable. And as we've stated previously, that it's the guy, you know, and what we submitted and previously was a, a code of conduct for those professional photographers. So this fee would be underscoring their, underscoring the importance of the code of conduct. And I think there was particular discussion in the past regarding having a day pass. I think Mr. Quavis' Matt's response is, addresses that issue. I mean, for enforcement and if you get a day pass and whether it doesn't cooperate. I think for easy administration through the course of a season, I think the flat fee to cover all contingencies for the, the entire season, I think that's best. And then, as indicated previously, this is not for the, the, the families taking a shot at, at, you know, taking photographs for, for proms or graduations. This is for the professional photographers who are in the garden who are setting up equipment, lighting, et cetera, who are charging a fee for the, for the photo shoot in the garden. And once again, we appreciate your support and time and taking a look at this, this issue.
And you're also looking to, if the $75 fee goes forward to change the Rose Garden rental to 75 as well, is that correct?
I mean, that's really up to you right now. The, the current amount is what, $50 for a resident for, for rental? I mean, you could, you could, you know, what's suggested there is, is, is maybe at 75, if, if it's going to, if you're kind of combining the two events, you know, if, if the person is renting the, the garden and they want to, they're having a professional photographer for a one day type of situation, then perhaps the, the $75 fee that Matt put in his email to you all would be appropriate. But that's really up to you. That would be combining the two, you know, right now there's the Rose Garden rental fee, which currently exists, with the $50 for city residents and $100 for a non-resident. And those are just suggestions in there regarding if you were to combine the two, if you will, for those special events.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I really appreciate all the work that you have done and your patience in answering all these questions for us over these last several weeks. Colleagues have any additional questions?
No, I was on the council before, so I, I get it. So no problem. I, it's no problem. And we appreciate, well, and once again, we appreciate your, your support and patience too.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes, Ms. Patrick.
Ms. Palamani, can we summarize what are we moving forward this evening?
Mr. O'Brien, correct me if I get this one wrong. But the idea is to make a motion to pass a $75 photography fee for the Rose Garden, for professional photographers.
Um, I think that, you know, you got, last, you know, the, the, the Corporation Council can chime in on this. I think you have to call for a public hearing anytime you're asking for a fee. And that there would be, have to be a public resolution calling for a public hearing first.
Oh, absolutely. I was just trying to get the, the idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Palamani?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Under, I'm sorry, who's, is this your, who's, I don't, I don't want to interrupt. This is, who's coming up?
Don't worry about it, go ahead, Ms. Perazzo.
Um, I apologize. Section 186 dash 18A of the City Code talks about permit fees for the use of the Rose Garden. What it says is permit fees for the use of the Rose Garden for both residents and non-residents shall be set by resolution of the City Council, with fee proceeds to be placed into a dedicated fund under the Rose Garden Improvement Code of the city budget. That being said, I don't necessarily think that we need to have a, a public hearing. Certainly the council can still have a public hearing on this. But the way it's worded in our code, the city code already kind of takes into consideration the fact that permit fees will change for the use of the Rose Garden. So we don't necessarily, the City Council doesn't necessarily have to do, have a public hearing for it. Obviously, to get the feedback of, you know, of people in the public, City Council can certainly hold a public hearing for this purpose.
And this is Sean O'Brien again. If, you know, if, if, you know, what Mr. Palamani said is, you know, really, you know, setting that $75 fee for the professional photographers. If that, you know, that's, that's what we're looking for here. Plus that code of conduct that we supplied to you earlier in, in, in the process. If that could be incorporated into the ordinance and the, and the resolution, that would be appreciated.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes, Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, I'd just like to get some clarity from Mr. Colden. You, you talked about on section 186A, that, 186 dash 18A. So, and it talks about the permit fees. The fact that we're adding another fee does not require a public hearing. Just that covers all, regardless. I just want to make sure.
I haven't seen the last resolution that the City Council passed relating to setting the fees. But I think for the purposes of use of the Rose Garden, which could include, as an example, this photography, you wouldn't have, you could add that fee as part of, you, you're already allowing it. Well, excuse me, the City Code already allows you to set the fees by resolution. It doesn't say what fees, it just says use of. And using a, you know, a broadly way of looking at the word use that would include photography. So I would argue that you don't need to have a, a public hearing on it. I mean, you can certainly still have a public hearing, get input from the community. But there's nothing in the code that, that requires you to do it. It's already intended in the code that you can do it by resolution.
Ms. Patrick, I have another question. I was, I would like to know the reasoning behind upping the fee from 50 to 75 just because the photography fee is 75? I'm not sure I understand that. Because the photography fee is for the entire year. Versus if people are using the Rose Garden, it's generally a one-time event. So I'm not sure why, what the thought process is making them the same.
Yeah, yeah, it's for simplicity, Councilmember Porterfield. I mean, it's a kind of a two for one. In other words, if you're going to get that situation where you're going to have a professional photographer at an event this way, but it, it's just a one event for, it's a one-time use, then you could combine the two and have a 50 plus, we're going to have a professional photographer there. I don't want to make this overly complicated. If you all just want to keep, you know, the, the fees as they are for the special events, as they're indicated already in the ordinance, that's all up to you. I think that the thought was that if you want it, you have a, a combined event, if you will, for that, to that special event and you just, you're kind of have a professional photographer there. That's the thought behind that. But if you all want to just keep it, keep it the same as far as special events or the fees of, you know, $50 to $100, $50 for a city resident, $100 for a non-city resident, and then that seasonal fee for the professional photographer, that's fine, you can do that.
Ms. Porterfield, anything else on that?
Uh, no, just, I'm going to say just a concern that if someone's renting the Rose Garden and they're not having a professional photographer, I don't think that that person should have the same cost as someone who went, is having a professional photographer. So I know it's, it starts getting a lot, becoming a lot of moving parts. But just to be fair to people that are using the Rose Garden for just, you know, an event, and then they're not having professional photographers, they're simply doing it with their cell phones, et cetera. I don't feel they should be paying the same amount as someone who's bringing in a, a professional. Because the whole of this is to make sure that professional photographers are paying a fee and going by the rule code of conduct, which has been drawn up.
Right, exactly. That's exactly the, that's exactly the intent. And, you know, if you want to keep it at $50 for that special event, you know, fine. That, that's, that's fine. I think that's, as you indicated, that it's really, you know, the code of conduct and the $75 are kind of the, we're, we're looking for here. And the, you can let the special events just stay as they are.
I, I think that's, firstly, I think that's the way to go because I think we're, we're just trying to complicate something that doesn't need to be complicated. The original intent, in terms of what you approached us for, was.
Right, exactly.
Code of conduct, I mean, the code of conduct for a professional photographer, which then would also include having this, this photography fee. So I, I think that that is what I would recommend.
Yeah.
Councillors have, is that Mr. Palamani?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest we make a motion to pass a $75 professional photography fee with a code of conduct that's attached to it. And just make it simple and move on.
Could I have a second?
I'll take a minute.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mubarak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. That's passed. And again, thank you to the Rose Garden. Okay, thank you very much, that's passed, and again, thank you to the Rose Garden.
All right. Council, council members, we appreciate your time and your, your effort and, and, and to looking into this, Councilmember Patrick and Palamini, and thank you to the mayor, and thank you all, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn Health and Recreation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I'd like to open up City Development and Planning, and the first item on the agenda is amending City Code 168. And I believe, Mr. Colden, you're going to give us an update on this?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, there was a public hearing at the, the last council meeting related to amending City Code, Section 167, related to the vacant building registration. We, as far as I know, the only comments, public comments that were received were from Mr. Marney, who submitted both in writing and also obviously spoke during the public hearing. I haven't received any other feedback in writing or otherwise related to the changes. So we're looking to move ahead, and, and we do take into consideration what Mr. Marney had said to determine whether or not this can be done in a different manner to make it more efficient. From looking at it and discussing this with Mr. Epstein and briefly discussing it with Mr. Lund, we think that the changes that are in here provide enough flexibility for, to alleviate the concerns that Mr. Marney raised, particularly when it comes to property that is, you know, for example, for sale. Required, obviously, there were requirements that after a certain period of time, somebody would, a property owner would have to register the property as a vacant building. But there's flexibility in terms of whether or not a fee would be assessed. It gives the chief building inspector the ability to waive a fee for one year. You can't, it has, it's a reasonableness standard, so you can't unreasonably withhold the ability to, or, or the waiving of the fee. So if somebody's entitled to a waiving of the fee, the chief building inspector would have to grant it. But rather than make it a, you know, a, everybody gets a waiver of the fee, we've done it in such, in such a way where people have to make a submission to show that they're entitled to the waiving of the fee. We do take that into consideration. So we're looking now to move forward this legislative request for the city council at the next council meeting to adopt the ordinance to amend Code Chapter, excuse me, Code Section 167.
Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Colden, well done.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I believe the next item on the agenda is, I think it's a permit, real permit sign? Issuance of a revocable permit, and Mr. Wallen, are you on?
Mr. Wallen isn't on, but I can speak to it if he isn't, I am aware of this.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, what Mr. Wallen has brought forward is a request for the issuance of a revocable permit down by the harbor. There are some lampposts that are city-owned. Max and Alka Holdings have reached out to the city requesting to decorate the lamppost down there for, you know, you know, based on the season. So I did speak to Mr. Wallen about this, about what's the best way to, to move this ahead. And we made a determination that the best way would be to do a revocable permit on the city light posts for the decorating of the light posts by a third party.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Ms. Zulsky-Walzounis?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Porterfield.
So, Mr. Colden, in terms of, I know that we do this downtown with the DSIC, is there a timeframe that these have to, that they, they cut up and have to be removed? Is there a timeframe with DSIC or any other fixture? And if so, does this have to adhere to that same timeframe?
There's a timeframe, I, I don't recall what it was. Let me just see if I can take a quick look through, because I actually haven't seen the application. I know they want to do it through the, the holiday season, so I know that would include Christmas time?
Yeah.
And the holidays at that point?
Yeah, I believe they would probably be taking it down by the 15th of January, I would assume. That's normally what they would do.
Well, I just want to know if we're consistent with, with, with what the rest of downtown's doing? I don't see it in the information, so if you could just, you know, provide us with that and to make sure that we're, we're being consistent with what the rest of downtown's doing, that would be great.
Sure, sure, I'll find out later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, Ms. Porterfield, if you're okay with that, can we move this resolution forward so that they'll be able to have an authorization to have the permit?
As long as we're, they're keeping consistent with what the rest of downtown's doing in terms of that, I am certainly fine with that.
Okay, all right. So I entertain a motion with that.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. So I believe the rest of the items are in executive session, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?